Good evening, Lake Forest, and welcome to the February 4th, 2019 session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Lansing?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Rumel?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Preschlack?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we formally bring Jason Wishap aboard as the city manager of Lake Forest in the form of the mayor's appointment and the council approval to the position of city supervisor as it is termed in the 1861 Lake Forest City Charter. Therefore, with the powers bestowed upon the mayor, I appoint Jason Wishap as city supervisor. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? We have ourselves a new city manager supervisor. Thank you. This action concludes a process begun some seven months ago to define, source, and decide the next Lake Forest city manager. Through the help of many citizens, council members, city staff, and outside experts, our intention was to attract and retain an outstanding manager. I know I am not alone in saying we found the right person. Further, the circumstances of Jason's hiring afforded nearly two months of onboarding for Jason to meet the city staff team, get to know council members, and to begin learning the city's many processes for accomplishing its work. Jason, welcome. This concludes the mayor's comments, and it gives me great pleasure to turn to the next agenda items. Comments by the city manager, Jason Wishap. But before you begin, the council wishes to bestow a present upon you, which I'm going to bring over and you have to open and show.
No pressure.
I think I recognize that paper. That's a Lake Forest bookstore paper.
The Lake Forest bookstore had a fine hand in this, actually to find the 1964 edition of the Edward R.P. History of Lake Forest, Illinois: History and Reminiscences. I think they had to go find it somewhere, but this is the best book about the early history of Lake Forest, kind of a landmark piece, and then others have been written since. Jason, just part of that large pile of homework you have.
Right. Well, mayor and members of the council, thank you very much for the reading material and the gift, and of course, for the opportunity to be here tonight. Unfortunately, my family couldn't be here. My youngest son Owen is a little under the weather, but I know they wish they would have been able to attend tonight. But I know I speak on behalf of them in saying that we, as a family, look forward to becoming a part of the Lake Forest community. And I will only just take a minute to say that, as the mayor alluded to, while my first week on the job was officially last week, I have spent a little bit of time over the last couple of months getting to know the community and having the chance to meet with Alderman and with city staff. And I only want to say thank you and express my gratitude for how welcoming everybody has been here. It really has meant a lot to me and makes me even more excited to begin this next chapter in my life. I also would just be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge our former city manager, Bob Kiley, for all of his efforts in assisting me through the transition that's occurred over the last couple of months. Bob has been nothing but gracious and helpful to me, and I'm sure it's no surprise to anyone in this room to hear what a class act he was, but it was very much appreciated by me, and so I thank him for that. And really, I would say the only thing that didn't go as well as hoped in the first week was Mother Nature, who really did not cooperate with my first week on the job, and that is an effective transition, hopefully, to turn it over to our public works director, Mike Thomas, who's here to provide a snow operations update to the council.
Michael, tell us.
Thank you.
Tell us how it was.
Hey, good evening, honorable mayor members of the city council. This evening, staff would like to present yourselves and residents at home an update as far as the snow season thus far. We initially thought it was going to be great through mid-January, and then something changed. But picture right off the bat, that's actually out at our compo center. That's where we haul all the snow. So all the snow uptown, all the city parking lots, everywhere goes out there. That was at the very beginning. The pile is much, much higher now. To review of our snow and ice plan assignments, first and foremost, we do all city streets, municipal parking lot, municipal services. We then hit our rest of our parking lots, railroad station platforms. We broom sidewalks, plow the remaining sidewalks, work on the uptown intersections and bridge decks, compo center, the recycling ramp that we need, West Park, and then we haul snow. So this one's difficult to see, but this is all of our numbers so far. We've spent approximately $150,000 in overtime. All the snow has come on the weekends and at night, which has been very stressful to manage. But it's been a very long three weeks. But you'll see these numbers that compare not only the same time period, November 15th through February 4th previous years, but grand total as well. So we have $170,000 budgeted for overtime. We're obviously very close. We're concerned about that. We're going to monitor that. Salt, we started with 2,400 tons. We have about 500 tons left. We're going to be receiving salt this week. But again, these are the numbers summarizing this year and many previous years' data. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on that. Moving forward, we're going to continue, obviously, responding to snow and ice. We're supposed to have some freezing rain this week, so we'll salt the whole town when that happens. We are going to receive about 950 tons starting tomorrow and Wednesday, and that will be our final order. So we're crossing our fingers, 1,400 tons will get us through the rest of the season. Street section has about 80 mailboxes that we need to repair. They'll get on that as soon as the weather breaks. Pothole repairs, we're doing those. We started those today as well. Engineering's going to be working with streets to determine all the street repairs that we're going to need to have ready to go this spring, but they will be working on that soon. Forestry, they repair all the parkway repair damages, so we have a list of that going. Again, when the weather breaks and we can get black dirt, forestry gets out and gets the parkway repairs done. Building maintenance has a good-sized project going on over at Public Safety. We need to get them out of the plow trucks and back to public safety, so they will be doing that this week. And then water and sewer has actually had a number of main breaks. They've had nine over the past two and a half weeks. We have eight repaired. We'll be fixing, well, I'm going to say seven repaired. Number eight, we need to order a special clamp. We figured that out today. And then number nine, we'll be working on tomorrow. So it has been a very busy two-and-a-half, three-week period. The guys are hanging in there, a little tired. They're happy to have the weekend off. But one question that we did want to discuss with the city council was our salting policy. As you know, back in March of 2015, city council adopted a policy that said December 1st through January 15th, we salt everything. January 15th through March 30th, we salt just the main roads and then hills, curves, and intersections of the side streets. We are into that period, and the question we have for city council, is that a policy you would like us to implement or continue with our current salting procedures? When this policy, just as some context, when this policy was developed, there was a salt shortage. We paid upwards of $170 a ton. We're currently paying $60 a ton. We were getting salt delivered to us from Texas. Obviously, we're having salt delivered to us tomorrow. So it's a policy, it's a guideline for us to work with, but it's something that we can adjust depending upon the storm. So we wanted to ask the city council your thoughts and opinions with us moving forward.
What are you actually asking there? Because obviously, it's highly dependent on the type of storm. I mean, if it's a complete glazing ice...
Glazing ice, freezing rain, we will salt every street in town automatically. That happens.
Yeah.
But if we receive five inches of snow, we will salt, at least the policy as it is written, says we'll salt all the main roads, Green Bay, Western, McKinley, Everett Telegraph. But side streets will not get salted except the hills, curves, and intersections of the side streets. That will basically take our salting from approximately 110 tons each time we go out down to about 50. So we save on salt, but the streets become snow-packed. What we had leading up to this weekend, where you had the side streets were snow-packed, that can begin to become somewhat slippery and icy, but that's what happens when you don't aggressively salt the streets. So there's environmental side, there's a cost side, but there's also a service side. And as I said, we recognize with freezing rain and ice, we'll salt everything, but with regular snowstorms this time period...
Well, and then it's more than the roughly 50-ton differential you just suggested.
Correct.
It's obviously all the truck time, overtime potentially, depending on the hours of the day, and when the storm hits, and the duration, and all that sort of thing. So it's more than just tonnage.
Well, the streets, all the streets, if we receive a five-inch snowstorm on Saturday, all the streets will be plowed. It's just a matter of whether or not the drivers will turn on the salting. Will we, we'll hit the salt, as I said, on all the main roads, but if they go up Forest Hill, or they go down Timber, Longwood, they're not going to salt. When they hit that intersection at Longwood and Timber, they're going to salt. But otherwise, the straightaway street, they would back off on the salt. That's the way we save salt.
So it's really just an incremental cost of the salts. The truck's already there, the driver's already there.
Correct.
Michael, is there any data that suggests that we should change our policy?
Currently, the pressure that we had back in 2015, financial pressure, that is really why the city council created this policy. It's difficult because I understand yourselves and the city manager and public work staff will receive phone calls about the quality of the streets. And in our case, right now and through the rest of the winter, we will have plenty of salt to salt. It simply becomes a cost-saving...
Right. Michael, I've received no phone calls.
I think it's a question...
I'm not aware of any accidents or increased incidence of accidents. I've received no phone calls. I don't know.
We had the one about 43 and 60, you know, that email, but I think that was well answered, that it wasn't city streets.
Correct.
And I think that this comes down to a question of safety. I think that has to be always our primary concern when we're talking about this topic. So were there increased automobile accidents as a result of not plowing the side streets that we know of?
When we have done this, implemented this in the past, no. Part of this is allowing the public through that December and January time period, quite frankly, to relearn driving techniques in the snow. And that you go into that six-week period, you salt everything, but everybody becomes reacquainted with driving in the snow. And that by mid-January, end of January, people know to slow down and give enough space. That was the theory behind it. So it's, as I said, it's a policy that city council worked with staff on creating. We have started at different times throughout the year, and there have been some years since we adopted this that we have not done it. So it's truly something I think that we have flexibility with.
Well, I think, obviously, it's been in place for a while, three years, four years. That you're the expert, and you're, I think, I remember now this discussion a while back about having citizens get used to driving, and then we're going to ease off because the sun does have an impact, and we have these 45-degree days that start to occur as you get into February and so forth, that really cut the impact of snowfall. So I don't know. Is there any feeling we should quote-unquote "change" this, or as we have done as a practical matter for some time here?
I think it's always...
Leave it to the public works director and the city manager?
Yeah, it's an audible delay. You've got to make the quality decision.
I don't think we need to solve a non-problem, number one. And the other thing is, as whoever just said, you audible when it's necessary.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I mean, you have license, you've been given license by us. You used it very wisely. I think we just stay with the same policy.
I think, you know, with the lower cost of salt, I think that decision gets a lot easier. What was the cost in 2015? Was that more than the $110 range?
Oh, 2015, we were paying upwards of $170 a ton.
And it's 60 now, you said?
60.
Yeah, so I mean, that makes that decision a lot easier, I think.
And we have storage now. We have more storage to save the salt, so the salt is still good next year if we have leftover salt this year, which is relevant, because we, didn't we create that storage fairly recently?
We did.
Right.
We did, right at the same time period.
Good point.
We, and when I speak with the police and fire chief, we're all on the same page, that we ultimately, in the end, want to make sure we provide safe streets for the residents. That is our number-one job. And I understand and respect the cost that goes into this. Every time we say it's time to go, there is a cost. We're bringing trucks and fuel and salt, and there's a cost to it.
But you're saying they're already there.
They are.
So the salt is the incremental difference.
Correct. And at 300 pounds per lane mile, that is how much we're putting down. There are towns, Waukegan and Highwood, are 800 pounds per lane mile. So when you go to towns that are truly running water, they're putting a whole lot more salt down than we are. So we have computers in all of our trucks, and we'll run 300. Sometimes we'll go up to 400 pounds per lane mile, but it really is not a lot. If you remember the old recycling bins that we had before the carts, if you picture Wesley between 41 and Green Bay, we dropped two of those. It's not a lot of salt.
Mike, would you also refresh everyone's memory on how you communicate with residents on an annual basis about this policy?
Sure. Susan Banks, we work with Susan Banks with the dialogue, and when the winter dialogue goes out, we remind people that this is our policy, this is our approach. Susan puts information on the website as well. Obviously, if residents call and have concerns about the quality of the streets, we share that with them, but that is essentially how we do it.
Thank you.
You know, Mike, you and I talked earlier today about 60 and 43, but I was communicating with a few residents on this Facebook page, but I would also say that a lot of residents were very highly complimentary of the work that was done this last couple storms and how quickly the streets were done. So other than, you know, the state highways, I think city, you know, Public Works is doing great, so I think the citizens noticed that, so...
Yeah, just, I mean, further to that thought is, once again, we, it was, it can be said, I think, that the state response for their highways, 41, 43, Waukegan Road, and 60, was erratic. That's probably the nicest way you could say it. We, if you go back through time, it's sort of, we never quite know when they're going to show up and at what force, and so forth. And without getting into too many gritty details, we have learned that the depredations of the state budget and the capital budget of the state is having an impact on the amount of equipment, the staffing, and the maintenance of those trucks. It's a gory story, actually. And I have asked the public works director and the city manager to explore some discussions with the state. We have the ability and the right to go plow these streets, but that's a pretty big upcharge because of the multi-lanes and so forth for us to do it. But to find out more about directionally where they're going with this, because what happens, and, you know, on the point that, Tim, you just mentioned, is the, you know, you drive, 24 hours after a storm, you drive on Lake Forest streets to get to 60 or 43, and gee, that was pretty nice, because everything's kind of trimmed up, and, you know, there's Waukegan Road, and it's a lane and a half on each side, and Route 60's the same thing, and, you know, what happened or didn't happen here? So long-winded alerting Lake Foresters that it's not the responsibility of Lake Forest by budget, and frankly, ultimately, the intended authority for it, but we have the right to cure as we need to, but it has a material potential cost. There is the possibility of reimbursement from the state, but I'm not sure how, the feasibility of that in today's world, and so forth. But we do our best, they look at it. You know, the plows on the way back, certainly the MS can take a swipe on the westbound lane of Route 60, but...
I can add to that, to give you an example. When we spoke to the state about that, they have what we refer to as shops. They've got a shop up in Gurnee, they've got one down in Wheeling. The shop in Gurnee, as far as Route 41, state line to Deer Path, Wisconsin state line to Deer Path, one truck, one tandem truck. In our world, we sit back and say, that's virtually impossible, because you have two lanes each way, you have two, you obviously have turn lanes, you're working to try and get the snow from that median all the way to the right side, and that, that's just very, very challenging. But your comments are dead-on. It comes down to dollars in available money and equipment and personnel. They want to do a good job. When you talk to the people that run it, they want to provide a good service, but they have those financial challenges.
Who's in charge of the tollway?
Illinois Toll Road Authority. So they are very well, they are very well-equipped.
That was very well-done.
Yep. The Illinois Toll Road has very nice equipment. They have salt staged throughout their toll road system. They do an excellent job.
And I just, I just want to add that thank you for being sensitive to the environment on all of this. I do think that's an important aspect of it.
It is.
I don't think residents of Lake Forest want to be throwing down salt if we don't have a safety issue involved. And again, I echo Alderman Reisenberg's comments of, you know, you're calling the plays as you see them, and we have confidence in you to do that, so...
Thank you. And we are trying, Alderman Rumel, as you noted, the different, what we call beet heat, beet juice mixed with calcium...
Right.
And essentially, salt water, to try and reduce the use of calcium. So we will put calcium chloride, when it hits 15 degrees or colder, we spray the salt with calcium chloride as it comes out of the trucks. That is why you have running water, and it can be minus 10 out. You have running water in the streets, you have calcium. When it's 15 and above, we just use salt brine. Salt brine is darn near free. It's salt and water mixed together. Calcium chloride's more expensive, beet heat is even more expensive, but it's much more friendly to the environment.
And how has that been working where you've been using it?
Great.
Great. That's a plus. Good.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add two more things? The first one, I'll do the not-so-positive one first. The potholes, which obviously are not, are not your fault. I happened to hit one today on Mayflower. Would you like me to call and talk to you about that, or leave a message someplace? Because my guess is, if you want the citizens to alert you to potholes...
Please.
Okay.
So we have, we have a spreadsheet...
Okay.
That if you call our public works administrative staff...
So that's what you, you want to just give us that number on TV here?
It should have been on the PowerPoint, I hope.
Okay.
810-3542. 810-3542.
With the 847.
What will...
That's your cell phone, Mike.
We've got that, too. But my sense is that, you know, we've got people out and about, and they're going to be able to find them.
Right. So what we, what we do now is we put down a product called Cold Patch.
Yeah, oh, no, I understand.
We do our best for that to adhere. We will then come back in the spring when the asphalt plants open, and we'll put a permanent hot patch in.
I'll do that. And separate from the potholes, I want to say, not only did the snow get removed, I mean, this is, this is follow-up praise for your staff. Shut me down if you feel like you've had enough, but I want to just, my praise, my understanding is, we did our, you all did the regular refuse pickup, and I think recycling as well last week. Is that correct? Thursday, you were out there doing the regular stuff. I mean, I'm pretty impressed, because I don't actually think anybody expected that. So super coolness.
If you remember back at your budget meeting, and I will, if I can take the opportunity to toot the horn of the sanitation guys, the budget meeting, November 26, landfills, private guys weren't picking up because of the snowstorm, schools were canceled, we picked up. This past Thursday, same thing. Private guys weren't picking up, landfills were closed, we picked up and just held the material overnight and brought it to the landfill the following morning. So garbage guys are a special group of guys, and they're a big part of the sanitation, a big part of the snow plan. We absolutely need them for the myriad of things that we need to get done. So they play an important role in that.
You'll extend our thanks.
I will.
Yeah, I did want to emphasize what Alderman Beidler said, that if you consider the working conditions that they had, I mean, it's, that they have to be out there doing the sort of work, whether it's the snow, the polar vortex, or the, all the conditions, and I think we do owe them a sincere expression of thanks for their contributions and their efforts to make our city as, you know, comfortable as they could under all those circumstances. So I think they did a great job. Just a point of clarification on the pricing issue, you know, as much as you have your contract now at $60 a ton for your, for salt, if you do go through your existing inventory and the 950 tons coming, that's going to require you, I take it, to go on a spot bid basis, and you're going to pay, I take it, quite a bit more at that point in time.
You are correct.
Thank you.
You are correct. We work with Lake County. Lake County has a good number of municipalities, and Lake County handles the bid for salt, and we have far much better, more success with the county than we have working with the state. But yes, they will have a two-year agreement, and once you use your allotment, you use your allotment. You're on your own, and it's market price, so...
Mike, I want to circle back on 43 and 60. Those two roads are very important roads to our city, and I'm wondering if, since we can't seem to rely on the state to get the job done, can we be the outsourced service there? And how much will they pay us for it? Because those two, those two roads, not only the intersection, but the entire roadway through Lake Forest is so important. I don't want the job, but if they're not getting it done, and we have people that are using those roads every day, from high schoolers and grade schoolers all the way through to, you know, people out working or, you know, headed for medical services, that's significant, and I'm concerned about that.
I will tell you, twice so far this winter, we have plowed 43 and 60 at the request of the police department. As I spoke with Alderman Newman this afternoon about the topic, the answer is yes, but there's a whole lot of things that come with the word yes. More trucks, more guys. If we're not going to do that route, then the priorities have to change. So if we get this town cleaned up six hours after it stops snowing, that's going to go to eight or nine easy, because those stretches are long, and when you have all the cars with them, it, you have to slow down. And you usually run trucks tandem on those, on those two-lane or four-lane roads. But there's, we have to really dive into what that whole process could be. And speaking to Deerfield, I think it is a lot more than just plowing. I think they assume the responsibility for many things. more than just plowing. I think they assume the responsibility for many things in that right-of-way, not just the street, uh, streetlights, pipes, parkways, sidewalks, et cetera. So, each town, from what we are understanding so far, negotiates with the state, and the state pays. But each town then has unique circumstances. And I will tell you that when, when we did plow, especially Route sixty, forty-three is much better, but sixty is, I will just say in general, rough on the equipment. The guys come back and are, they're bouncing all over the place. But where there's a will, there's a way. It's just priorities and cost. So, I'm gonna work with our, our new City Manager to look at that this coming spring and summer, and we'll report back to the Public Works Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
Job well done. I took the opportunity last Thursday. Mike had a shape-up over Public Works and offered a little lunch of subs and things for the crew, and I went and extended the thanks of the citizenry, which I think was well-received.
Yes, so thank you.
By the team.
Thank you for yourself and our City Manager for, for attending. The guys, guys appreciated it, so.
Yeah, it was interest, great group. You know, I recognize so many of them. They've been, you know, they've been here a long time, and, uh, of course, you know, you get to know your garbage guys, right?
That's what I was gonna say. Coming up to your house twice a week.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Does that conclude your remarks?
And that concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Next, Committee reports. First, the Finance Committee, consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and an ordinance amending the city's home rule sales tax rate from a half a percent to one-point-zero percent. This is a final approval presented by Elizabeth Hollab, although we...
Mr. Mayor, maybe I could interject? Because the Director and I have talked about, this will be the, I think, the third time this has come up. So, we've been through this twice. So, rather than having the Director go through it a third time, we'd like to open up for questions and comments for the Director, if people have any. She's happy to answer those without going through the whole presentation again.
So, no changes or modification to what we saw last?
Thank you. Open for questions. There being none?
Have we had any comments? I, I know that we've had the Director of the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff Chamber of Commerce speak.
Correct.
Have we had any other input from the community?
No, that I'm not aware of. No. Any comments, questions from the community? If not, I'll turn it back to you.
Right. Well, thank you. There being no additional comment, I'll ask for a motion to grant final reading to the proposed ordinances. So moved.
Second.
Uh, this is a roll-call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience so inclined? Sir?
Ms. Richard Sugar. I live at ten-fifty-nine Marlane. First of all, I want to compliment the City Council. It's not usual that people come up here and compliment the City Council, so I want to break with tradition. It is delightful that you're experimenting with the pop-up, uh, the pop-up businesses at the train station on Telegraph Road. I think that's a really great idea. It is community-oriented as well as business-oriented, so congratulations on thinking of that. That's great. I do want to segue into another serious problem, not a serious problem, but a serious consideration involving Telegraph Road Train Station, and that's the question of the underpass. I just want to make sure that you've thought through with good deliberation the issues that arise in building this underpass. I know you've talked about it quite a bit. The first question that comes to mind is, after polling many, many, many women in our neighborhood, whether they felt, how they felt about using the underground, the underpass, I have not found one woman who said to me, I feel comfortable going underneath the train tracks. And I'm just wondering, if that's the case, why are we using resources of the city that come from both men and women, when women don't want that underpass because they don't feel comfortable walking underneath the railroad tracks and feel threatened? You know that, I, I know you know that the east side train tracks had the under, underpass, and it was abandoned. And there are reasons why it was abandoned, because no one wanted to use it. So, I, I, I hope you would think about that very seriously. And speaking of the underpass and the safety issues, you know, there's, on the east side, when you had an underpass, there are no freight trains. Freight trains carrying heavy, heavy, heavy material. Well, we have a lot of heavy material on the west side, obviously, with the coal and the oil. And I hope you consider the effects of the weight and the vibration. I know you've heard a lot of talk last year about the people who live near the train and suffer cracked walls and crack windows and crack siding. But I, I think there's a serious issue to think about when you have these very serious, these very, was that a cutoff for me? When you have these very, very serious vibration issues, and you have a tunnel, and you're gonna have a tunnel that's shaking and is gonna start to deteriorate the walls and the ceilings and the bottom. And, and when you put that in the context of the extreme weather that we've had, as Mike has talked about at length, where we have hotter summers, colder winters, one-hundred-year floods every year, there's gonna be a huge, huge maintenance problem for keeping that underground tunnel in good shape. So, it's not just the cost upfront, but you're leaving a legacy to future City Council members about huge amounts of maintenance that will, that will have to take place.
Yeah. Well, all good points, and it is a, a very serious set of considerations. And before the underpass comes forward again, or as it comes forward again, we will have a thorough community discussion about it, background, you know, like we do with large capital projects, and have more, certainly more than one or two meetings about it. The pop-ups are terrific. You know, it's, it's seemingly frustrating and puzzling at the same moment, that here's a train station, a lot of people go through it. It's kind of a center of the community, if you will, and it's hard to find folks to lease it and make it a commercial space. But the, the challenge goes on, and ideas come forward. You know, on the, on the underpass, I, I think one important thing to do is to, the, the engineering of it is considerable. And all those questions you raised need to be looked at, not the least of which is the safety and the whole presentation of it. I can assure you, it is an entirely different planet from what the east side station was, which was a narrow staircase that went down to this claustrophobic little tunnel, it was about this wide, and then went up the stairs. This is a broad, open thing, much more akin to what's at Ravinia, if you're familiar with that. Highly lighted, you know, comes from a slope and a grade, and it's very open and visible from a safety point of view. So, there's a lot of things to address and think about there, but that, that, those are very, we look forward to the conversation.
Thank you.
With the community on this. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the omnibus vote, or items for omnibus vote consideration. We have, I think it's eight tonight, yes?
Not twenty-two.
Not twenty-one or two.
Going down.
Uh, the first is, but I'm required to read all these, so this is not because I like to hear myself speak. Approval of the January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen City Council Meeting Minutes. Number two, approval of the check register for January twelfth through twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Approval of an Audit Committee recommendation to award a two-year extension of the city's contract with Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus, LLP, to provide audit services. Four, approval of the purchase of semi-ruggedized computers for Police Department use as budgeted in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. I'm gonna leave that one alone. I could come up with some funny ways, funny things about that, but the blunt-force trauma from all the fingers of the police officers, is that what it is? Five, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a first reading, and if desired by Council, final approval. Number six, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the zoning board of appeals, also a first reading, if desired by Council, and final approval. Seven, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, a first reading, and if desired by Council, final approval. And last, but not least, approval of a cemetery commission recommendation to authorize the City Manager to enter into a contract with Burgland Construction Company for restoration services for the historic Burrell Memorial Gateway at the Lake Forest Cemetery for an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. As we do, if anybody would like to remove any item for separate consideration, we can do that, but short of that, if there's any questions or...
If I could just ask a question, Mr. Mayor. It relates to the check register. There's a, under all other funds, that's where a significant amount of the dollars is listed there. And there is a little bit of explanation, but I was confused a little bit by it indicating that it involved payments for the water treatment plant improvements. Could you explain that, what's happening now at this time?
Sure. So, the city is continuing, Public Works Department is working with the contractors to continue the improvements to the water treatment plant. So, these are just progress payments as that work continues, and so that is paid for out of the Water Capital Fund, so that falls in the all-other-funds category.
It's not connected to the new filters or anything like that with the...
It is. All part of the filters and the capacity improvements to the plant.
But isn't that all up and running now? Or...
Not quite.
The, uh, the water plant, uh, we should have the water plant completed by the end of April, early May. All of the skids are operational. They've all been signed off by IAPA, so we're using all of the new GE membrane filters. But as far as the project, we're almost there. We've got a couple more months. It should be wrapped up by the end of April, early May, and then we'll invite City Council down to see the new plant.
Thank you.
Truly humming along, right? Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus items as presented.
So moved. Second.
It's a roll-call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlach?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Uh, thank you. Next agenda item is new business. Consideration of approvals related to community events proposed at the West Lake Forest Train Station at nine-eleven Telegraph Road, to be presented by Mike Strong, Assistant to the City Manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Members of Council. So, I am happy to be here about presenting a proposal for some community events in the West Train Station Depot Building. As the Mayor had mentioned, you know, this has kind of grown out of an engagement the city has with a commercial broker that we, we have a relationship with to help solicit interest in some of the vacancies out there. And really came out of a brainstorming session of, you know, is there anything else creative we can do to not just solicit interest in that space, but just to bring people together in an otherwise underutilized location? And, you know, so we've, you know, that are, I should say, commensurate with this strategic plan that, you know, the commuters have responded to via survey. And this idea of the pop-up event culture sort of came to mind and thought, you know, for the months, especially in February, March, and April, when there's not much else going on, it's a great space to, to have a community event. So, our broker connected with some community members who are really interested in a few different topics, and I'm gonna walk through here shortly. But, you know, really excited. There's a lot of momentum. They're driving these concepts, and I think have some really good ideas of ways we can engage, you know, not just the Lake Forest community, but the broader Lake Forest community on that side of town. And so, specifically, I bring in this, bringing these items and this proposal to your attention pursuant to our special event policy due to the unique nature of the request, the proposal, the location. It felt it would be a great opportunity to kind of review this, and is not inconsistent with how we, we would require approvals for similar-type events. So, just to orient everyone, this is the Telegraph Station here, generally, at Waukegan and Everett. And the location is a metro station, the Milwaukee North Line, and has a fairly large indoor depot building, a lobby area, if you're familiar with the site. There's also two smaller commercial spaces, but a fairly large indoor space. And so, we received a proposal for three concepts. The first one is a winter wellness event. That would focus and showcase wellness agencies, organizations, and businesses from both the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff community. The second is a volunteer fair. That would occur on March tenth. And the third event, which is still being massaged a little bit, is a family foodie event, which would showcase samplings and tastings from area food vendors and restaurants. So, very exciting concepts. All three are proposed to take place on Sundays. We have three dates that we have identified. Then, the events would take place from one to four. So, you know, for those watching at home, if they're looking for something to do on the weekends, it's a great opportunity to come out, see the community, and participate in, in a, in a, in a community event like this. Some quick logistics, all activities would take place indoors. And if you recall, a couple years ago, we did have an indoor market that took place, or sort of as a pilot, an experiment, to see how things work, see if the site really could handle and manage a community indoor event like this. And so, working with our Fire Prevention Bureau, Community Development Staff, you know, really helped sort of lay out a framework and a site plan that we think is not only safe for patrons, but that I think aligns with our, our codes and requirements. And so, it would be, and these three events would take place indoors. No city services would really be required. There's ample parking on the lot, no off-site signage, you know, so it's a, really, from a community standpoint, really non-invasive, and a great opportunity to utilize a public space in a, in a unique way. So, really, that's a review of the concept. We have two actions for you to consider this evening. One is, you know, the special event permits for those three days is being requested. But secondly, you know, we're sort of viewing this as an, as a unique public-private partnership, if you will, a pseudo-partnership, in bringing communities in, trying to work with them. So, we did receive a request to waive the permit and inspection fees. We're just looking for Council to consider that as well for these events. And in that amount of five hundred dollars for both the permit and inspection fees at this point, which are anticipated. And, you know, with the third event, since that's sort of still in the planning stages, we anticipate maybe coming back and sharing an update with you on the status of that event. But those would be for your consideration this evening. With that, myself or Deb Fisher, who's City Broker, would be happy to answer any questions you might have, or any thoughts you have on the proposal this evening.
Mike, I know there was some question about the, there were some insurance questions related to this. How have you resolved those?
Yeah, we've actually been able, and I'll have Deb jump in, but we've been able to provide some resources to the event organizers to secure single-day event license, insurance, or insurance liability for these types of events, which is, which is required.
Yeah, so basically, that's not included in any waiver. They're just gonna take on the, the cost of the, three events can be lumped into one insurance, one special event insurance.
event insurance.
Right.
First, let me congratulate Mike and Deb, and anyone else who has been involved in moving this thing along and getting to where you are. I know from the perspective of the citizens in my ward and other wards in the area that are served by the, the train station, if we can make utilization, if we can bring the community together, if we can provide information, opportunities, I think it's so much better. So again, congratulations and thank you for doing it. I'd also encourage you to do what you can to promote it, to get the message out there, and to provide the citizens the information so that they can see what's the, you know, opportunities we have here, and so obviously, all three topics are, you know, very interesting, you know, health, being able to contribute and volunteer, and also to look for an opportunity for some, maybe some food tasting. I assume it will not be liquor tasting, though.
No. We're not adding that layer to it.
Again, I'd encourage that anything we can do to help expedite, help along, and encourage, and enhance the operations, I hope we can do it.
Well, and basically, I think we started it by figuring out three different topics, as you said, that already have a good market in town. They have an audience in town, and they have a market full of vendors and service organizations and such, so we really looked at it that way. Health and wellness is a big thing in our town, volunteerism, we all know, so the volunteerism one is going to be very much almost like speed dating for families to come and meet all the different organizations that would love to have additional volunteers, and have their chance to kind of see where they fit, and where they can maybe make a difference, and where they'd like to get involved. And then the third one is the foodie one. We've got all kinds of fun organizations in town, food service, restaurants, et cetera, and demand for that. So, we're kind of relying on the vendors to put out to their audiences, you know, let them know that it's out there, we will use social media, these are pop-ups, so there's not really an advertising budget and such, but social media works really well in this town, and with all of them pushing out, we're really hoping that that's going to get to the people, and please encourage everybody to come and attend, and, you know, talk it up whenever possible, we'd love to see you guys attend as much as possible. Any other questions?
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you. Sounds like a terrific set of ideas.
Great, thank you.
And I dare say there'll be other organizations that'll want to jump into this. So, with that, any other further questions or comments? Any comments or questions from the audience? Mr. Sugar already spoke to this matter. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion to authorize, well, two things, really, approve Class A special event permit for community events to be held on February 24th, March 10th, and April 14th at the station.
So moved.
Sorry?
I think I can combine these.
Please do.
Authorize the city manager to waive all associated permit and inspection fees for the events in a total amount not to exceed $500 unless otherwise authorized by future council action.
So moved. Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Final item for tonight is additional items for discussion, comments by council members, and I invite whatever final thoughts we have for our new city manager, as launches forth today, the first day of the rest of his life. New capacity.
Well, let me beg your pardon, welcome. I've had a lot of people ask me about the youth of our new city manager, and I reminded that Bob Kiley was also young and stayed for quite a long time, and I commented on your maturation in Skokie, which is a much more complicated community in terms of all the things going on in there, but your ability to communicate with the residents, your thoughtfulness, and the wealth of experience that you've brought to our community, so I'm very happy that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. City Manager, you, you know that we have, I know you know all about this because you and I have talked about it, the Welcome Home Campaign. And the Welcome Home Campaign, of which I might note, Deb has been a very active participant, and also Susan Banks, who is, both of whom are in the room, I would be remiss in not mentioning them, and I've worked on it now for a few years. Really ended up, originally, the idea of the Welcome Home Campaign was to get people to, who, who might not think of moving to Lake Forest to move to Lake Forest, and that was an important component, we worked with the realtors on that, and, and, and I think, you know, we've done marketing and so on, and I think it's been good. Something I think we didn't adequately anticipate was how great it was going to be for residents to confirm the reasons that we live here, and how many there are, how many reasons there are to live here, and people are always, even now, people are stopping me, and I'm sure this happens to Deb, and says, "You've got to add this to your," we have a tool on the website that has all the interesting things, and interactive tool and so on, it's great. Anyway, there are amazing reasons to live here, and I would never suggest that, that, I mean, that we want to go head-to-head with Skokie, because clearly, we, we want you here, so we're thrilled about that. So what I'd like to do tonight is welcome you to your new work home, but what I really want to do is say how much we look forward to having you and Jessica and Natalie and Owen all actually living here and welcoming you home in that way, so you'll, you'll let us know when that's appropriate, but that's something that's going to be just incredibly meaningful to all of us.
And to me as well, thank you.
I just want to, Jason and I have had some, some offline discussions, and I've shared with Jason some of the history of Lake Forest, which is a very rich history, and I just look forward to you writing some of the next chapters in that long and esteemed history of our community. Welcome.
Thank you.
I saw the picture of you and now former city manager Bob Kiley standing next to each other, and I was kind of reminded of that picture that gets trotted out every New Year's Day with the baby and the old man. I'm happy to see you're well out of the diaper stage.
Just barely.
But you're in luck with real estate, because I think we have 434 homes here for sale. So on that note, I want to personally welcome you to your new position, I wish you the best into the future.
Great, thank you very much.
Hello, Jason, this is your first meeting. You're going to get me out of here before 7:30 tonight? You're off to an incredibly good...
Welcome, Jason, and I just want to say that youth is an advantage, so we hired you for a reason, you have very great background, real strong interpersonal skills, and great leadership style, and a lot of acumen around the issues that we're going to face from a financial perspective moving forward, so I think you're young but well-versed in the ways of the world, in particular, municipal finance and government, so welcome, and thank you so much. You also have a great staff. And I want to say thank you to the staff for welcoming Jason and continuing to be great leaders for our city and for your departments, and so, thank you very, very much for that, and we look forward to working with you. And final note, please don't be too deferential to the city council, because we...
Be like Bob.
Because, because sometimes we do need to be led, and I think Bob said something at my first workshop, individually, we're powerless, but together, we have all the power, and you can help us come together through your experiences.
That's a good point, yeah.
And I think it's really important, so don't be too deferential. Always say what you think is right, in a polite way, of course. Thank you.
I will also extend my welcome to you, it's really a pleasure to have you, Jason, and I'm really looking forward to not only, especially with our, with our financial systems, the data-driven character of what we can accomplish in a longer-term view, and certainly also the quality of the staff that we have, but don't ever forget the quality of the residents, because we have some incredible top-shelf characters in town, and one of the things that I've learned living here now for, for 20 years is, all you have to do is ask, and don't be shy about it, people want to help, and we're all, we're all there with you, it's a collaborative effort. Thank you.
Jason, welcome. I did not have, this is part of my comments, but it's certainly fitting in light of the subject we had tonight. You reached out to the council to meet with them before you were on our payroll, an opportunity of one-on-one conversation, and maybe with a great deal of foresight, knowing what was going to be on the subject tonight, we met at the west side train station and had a very good opportunity to get to know one another better, and so now you know the third, you know our, our train station that we're talking about here. But we also recognize that the position you're coming into is one of a great responsibility for a great city, but it's one that I think you can take a great deal of comfort knowing that you have a great staff, as the other aldermen have mentioned, a great set of citizens, both volunteers and those that are interested and are willing and able and happy to reach out to you, and we look forward to your joining the city, and Mr. Wishah, we wish you the best of success.
And for myself, obviously, Jason and I spend a lot of time together, I've said everything to him just about that I plan to, you know, on this age thing, Bob Kiley was actually more than three years younger than you were, and yes, he also had no gray hairs when he started.
I have to look forward to that.
Have that to look forward to. So, with all this, I'd like a motion for adjournment as we go into the next room for a little reception for Jason.
So moved.
With coffee, cake, and oatmeal raisin cookies. I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.